Good morning, the time is now 9:32 and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of October 8th, 2019 is called to order. We begin with the approval of the agenda in order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add to or delete from the agenda?
Motion to approve, as permitted.
Motion to approve, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, Marilyn will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning, I'm Marilyn Schne- Well. Do this. I'm told to remind people also to keep the microphone as close to your mouth as you can when you're speaking, so there's that reminder and I almost forgot to do it. I'm Marilyn Schneider, I'm the State Board Executive. You've just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice, he's the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, also known as State Superintendent, and he's the Chairman of the State Board of Education. And as we go around the table to his left, Dr. Cassandra Albridge is the President of the Board, she resides in Dearborn. Next to her, the Board's Vice President is Dr. Pamela Pugh, you may know her, she resides in Saginaw. The Board's Secretary is Ms. Michelle Fecto, she resides in Detroit. Ms. Nikki Snyder is also a Board Member and she resides in Dexter. Next to her, Ms. Tiffany Tilly, she resides in Southfield and she's the Board's NASBY Delegate, National Association of State Boards of Education. And next to her is this year's Teacher of the Year, Carol Lawheed. When she's not here, she's teaching English and History in Stony Creek High School in Rochester, Michigan. And as we go across the table, that seat is reserved for the Governor's Representative, Josh Nahart is usually at the Board Table representing the Governor's Office. And coming around the table, Dr. Judith Pritchett, Board Member from Washington Township. And then Lupe Ramos Montini, Ms. Montini is from Grand Rapids, she's Board Member from Grand Rapids. Next to me is the Board's Treasurer, Mr. Thomas McMillan, and he lives in Oakland Township. Thank you.
Thank you Marilyn. If you plan to offer public comment today, please complete a form and get it to Marilyn. Forms must be submitted prior to the beginning of the portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. Public comment will begin immediately following the lunch break at approximately 1:00 PM. Please be here at that time to make sure that you have an opportunity to comment. First item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentation by the Saginaw Intermediate School District. Thank you to Superintendent Dr. Kathy Stewart and the staff of the Saginaw ISD for hosting today's State Board of Education meeting. Students from Chestening Union Schools are doing the videotaping and culinary students from the Saginaw Career Complex have prepared the food. Your hospitality is greatly appreciated here today. We're happy to be in Saginaw County to see firsthand your work in this transformation zone. Dr. Stewart will be sharing educational highlights from Saginaw Intermediate School District. Dr. Stewart, will you please introduce the people who will be presenting with you?
Thank you again for traveling to Saginaw ISD to meet on this beautiful October day. I don't think we could have asked for any more stellar day than what we're experiencing here as a Michigan fall day. So enjoy your visit to Saginaw, enjoy the wonderful weather, and we hope that you are inspired by what you're going to see this morning. Before we bring in our different team members to share their points of pride and a little bit about Saginaw ISD so you get a full flavor of what we offer as an intermediate school district, I'd like to recognize two of our Board Members that are here. We have Ruth Coppins, Board Member from Saginaw Intermediate School District. How many years Ruth?
Forty-two.
Forty-two years.
I started when I was ten.
And Joe Poe, Saginaw ISD Board Member. How many years Joe?
Over thirty.
Over thirty. So we thank them. I'm very fortunate, I have a dream Board to work with and a dream Team to work with. And the first Dream Team Member I'm going to introduce to you is our Executive Director of Human Resources, who is currently serving as the interim Executive Director of Finance as well, Mr. Scott Sawyer.
Thanks, it's great to be here today. I'm so glad that you're in Saginaw County to hold your meeting today. As Dr. Stewart said, I'm filling in in Finance for a little bit. We're so proud of the work that our Finance Department does and, you know, working with our locals, meeting consortium needs, helping all the great programs that you're going to see about here later today and some of the kids that we have, as well as hosting collaborative services with our local school districts, including accounts payable services, accounts receivable services, business office management for some of our smaller districts as well as payroll services. And with me today is Kim Ruski, our Area Supervisor for Payroll, who oversees how many payrolls-
Yeah, good morning everybody. I run the payroll department here at the Saginaw ISD and along with the Saginaw ISD's payroll, we also do seven of our local school districts here in Saginaw County. So we house that here and are able to provide those services out to our local districts.
Yeah, I think the best part about working at the ISD for me is I spent fifteen years as a teacher and business manager in local school districts and having that connection back to our locals is great, as well as I get the privilege of housing our- or heading our Orange Frog Initiative, having this advantage, which you'll hear a little bit about today and is in the presentation. So thanks for meeting here today and here in about Saginaw County.
Next up, we're going to bring in Executive Director of Career Technical Education, Jennifer Gino.
As Dr. Stewart indicated, my name is Jenny Gino and I'm the Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, and I wanted to just welcome you all here this morning. One of our big points of pride is this last November, we were fortunate enough to have a countywide milage for career and technical education passed by the voters in Saginaw County. An absolute historic occurrence here in our county that is enabling us to afford all kinds of programs to our students throughout the county. So I have a couple of those students here with me in just a moment, I'll introduce them to you. And then in December, we were also fortunate enough to be the recipient of the largest Marshall Plan for Talent Grant Award in partnership with Muskegon Intermediate School District. So we're known as the M-46 Talent Consortium. So in partnership with seventy-four partners from business and industry, education and a variety of nonprofit organizations, we are working really hard to help fill the talent gap. So with me, I have two students, I would like to introduce themselves.
Hello, I am Benjamin Brenner. I go to the Culinary Program at SEC and my homeschool is Valley Lutheran High School and I plan on pursuing a career at Business Management with Culinary.
Hi, I'm Elena Anderson, I'm also with him at the Saginaw Career Complex for Culinary. I go to Bertrand High School, I'm in 11th grade and I pursue- I want to pursue a career in hospitality management.
And they work to prepare breakfast and lunch for you today as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce to you now Dr. Erica Taylor, she's the Executive Director of Early Childhood and Parenting Services. Dr. Taylor.
Good morning. So in our early childhood department, we have ten programs that we manage, Head Start, Early Head Start, GSRP, Great Start to Quality, Great Start Collaborative, 32P, 32P4, LLG, and Trusted Advisors, as well as Healthy Families, America, and MYAP. And so today, I have some of our representatives for our department. The first I would like to introduce is one of our MYAP Case Managers, Mr. Tori Jackson. He is also our Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator for the ISD and he has a few of our parents with him at this time.
Okay, so my name is Tori Jackson. Like she said, I am the MYAP Coordinator or MYAP Case Manager. I help our teen parents pull out strengths, recognize strengths that they have within themselves and use those strengths to overcome different obstacles, accomplish different goals that they set for themselves. We use a curriculum that will help them set short-term goals and then those short-term goals become long-term goals that will eventually help them become successful parents. I brought two of my young parents who have started with me probably about two years ago now and they will share the different benefits that they receive through our program and the different things that they really enjoy. This is Jasmine Speed and this is Devin Blondie.
Hi. They've been really good to us, they help us out with a lot of personal stuff, like whenever we need anything, like if I- If I needed diapers or wipes or like a ride to a doctor's appointment when none of my family would, they help out a lot. Take me to school and a lot, you know. Yeah.
I mean, since I started, they helped me. I figured like I graduated and I got a job, they helped with a lot of different stuff, like they helped us with the baby. I mean, I prob- I don't know, I probably wouldn't have finished school if I wouldn't join the program. I started showing up more. It was a, I don't know, it was a lot of stuff.
So, different things that they benefit, we recently just finished a six-week cooking class and after our cooking class, our teens last year as well as this year, they received different incentives for finishing. Last year, they received donations, so I use a lot of my connections throughout the community. They receive a twelve-piece pot and pan set. Each time after each class they cook, we give them, we provide them with the food, they use that food, they take pictures of them cooking with their family, their children, and just doing things bonding with their family. So our program is very beneficial and as you can tell, they're having a good time together and they accomplished a ton of goals that they, whatever goal that they set, we push them, if they fall, we're there to pick them up.
And now I would like to introduce Stephanie Eichhold, she is our GSRP Head Start Manager.
Good morning, we have some three and four-year-olds from our Valley site here and Sarah would like to introduce them.
My name is Sarah Grace Scott and hope to have a great day at the show.
Right. All right friends, hands on your hips, show me your smiles. Okay, on the count of three, we're going to do Baby Bumblebee. One, two, three, catch your bumblebee, go.
I bring home a baby bumblebee. Won't my mommy be so proud of me? I bring home my baby bumblebee. Ow, it's gonna hurt me. I brush up my baby bumblebee. Won't my mommy be so proud of me? I brush up my baby bumblebee. Ew, it's over me. I wipe you off my baby bumblebee. Won't my mommy be so proud of me? I wipe you off my baby bumblebee.
Ready, five little monkeys on the count of three, one, two, three.
Five little monkeys jumping on the bed. One fell off and bumped his head. Mom called the doctor and the doctor said, no more monkeys jumping on the bed. Two little monkeys jumping on the bed. One fell off and bumped his head. Mom called the doctor and the doctor said, no more monkeys jumping on the bed. Three little monkeys jumping on the bed. One fell off and bumped his head. Ouch, mom called the doctor and the doctor said, no more monkeys jumping on the bed. Two little monkeys jumping on the bed. One fell off and bumped his head. Ouch, mom called the doctor and the doctor said, no more monkeys jumping on the bed. Three little monkeys jumping on the bed. One fell off and bumped his head. Ouch, mom called the doctor and the doctor said, no more monkeys jumping on the bed.
Guys, I guess last song, Baby Shark, on the count of three.
Baby shark doo doo doo. Baby shark doo doo doo. Baby shark doo doo doo. Baby shark. Mommy shark doo doo doo. Mommy shark doo doo doo. Mommy shark doo doo doo. Mommy shark. Daddy shark doo doo doo. Daddy shark. Daddy shark doo doo doo. Daddy shark. Grandma shark doo doo doo. Grandma shark doo doo doo. Grandma shark. Grandpa shark doo doo doo. Grandpa shark doo doo doo. Grandpa shark. Grandpa shark. Let's go hunting doo doo doo. Let's go hunting doo doo doo. Let's go hunting doo doo doo. Let's go hunting. Run away doo doo doo. Run away doo doo doo. Run away. They spent lots doo doo doo. To grab us doo doo doo. To grab us doo doo doo. It's the end doo doo doo. It's the end doo doo doo. It's the end.
Take them out. Yay!
So those were just some representatives, our heart and soul of what we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that was wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the next department, I don't know what songs they have planned, but it's Human Resources and Andrea Wise is serving as the Interim Director of Human Resources for Saginaw Intermediate School District.
Good morning, yes, I'm not quite sure how we're going to follow, that's a hard act to follow and Baby Shark. So, good morning, my name is Andrea Wise and I'm serving as the Interim Director of Human Resources. Our Human Resources Department consists of a team of eight and we service HR services to six hundred and seventy ISD employees as well as our five local school districts. Some of the services we provide include benefits administration, new hire onboarding, which we hired over two hundred and thirty-six employees this year between the five local school districts and the ISD. We also do fingerprinting background services, Skyward Employee Management, Labor Relations, Contract Negotiations, and State Reporting of the Rep. We also lead a HR Roundtable Group that encompasses Saginaw, Bay, Midland, and Clare Counties and we also present inside and outside Saginaw County on HR-related topics. One of our focus areas this year is working with diversity, inclusion, and social equity across the ISD organization. I have with me today Amanda Westin, I'd like to introduce to you. She handles all of our fingerprinting background checks and she's going to share with you the services she provides to the local school districts.
Hi, my name is Amanda, happy Tuesday. I'm the Human Resource Specialist, also known as the fingerprint person. For the eighteen-nineteen school year, I printed seven hundred and twenty-seven applicants for the school districts, which comes out to be seven thousand two hundred and seventy fingers. This service is provided at no additional cost to the school districts. We serve a total of twelve local school districts. The services that we provide include, but not limited to, we do auditing support, preparing each school districts for the audits, making sure that they have the proper paperwork and that they know what to expect, but not just for the audits, but all throughout the year, making sure they're compliant, make sure that they have the updated forms that they need. We also work with two different companies, ESS and EduStaff. What we do is for the local school districts, there's twelve local school districts that go through the two companies, they provide substitutes within the school districts, we do the affidavit approvals for them, and then we also share those criminal background checks, making sure that each school district has criminal background checks on each employee before the employee starts. We also assist with any questions with Chris, with fingerprints, form updates, compliance questions, we kind of service the Captain America of the local school districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce to you Executive Director of Instruction, Rebecca Hornet.
Well, good morning. Thank you for joining us today. I just want to give you a quick synopsis of what my department does and who I brought with me today. So, my department is in charge of all the instructional services for the local school districts, so all twelve school districts plus our PSA. Yesterday, we had an extremely large countywide professional day with hundreds of teachers. We provided trauma training, literacy essential training, and then STEM technology integration training for those teachers yesterday, so that was an exciting day for us. We came back here and tore down real quick, put the PD Center back together. We also oversee our PD Center here. In addition to our services in the area of professional learning, we also provide a number of student programs, three to be exact. Our first one is the Saginaw County Juvenile Detention Center School. We're currently working on ensuring wraparound services for students out of the juvenile justice system when they leave. And then in addition to that, we have Math in the Mail. Math in the Mail is an amazing program where we mail kits home to three-year-olds to focus on improving their math skills and it is free to students who qualify, so we're really excited about that program. Now I'm going to introduce to you Kevin Summy from our Great Lakes Bay Early College and his students to kind of talk a little bit about our Early College Program.
Thank you Rebecca. Once again, I'm Kevin Summy, I'm the Program Coordinator for the Great Lakes Bay Early College. And today I have the pleasure of actually introducing a young man who's in his thirteenth year at the Great Lakes Bay Early College, who's also our President of the School Leadership Council and he also is an aspiring teacher. His name is Mr. Caleb Russo.
Hi there, thank you guys for having us today. So just want to tell you a little bit about the Early College Program. So it began back in 2011 and it services the Tri-City area, so it's Saginaw, Bay City, Midland, and Tuscala County. The program provides an opportunity for students to earn up to sixty college credits while still earning their high school diploma. So the program is fully immersive into the college campus, which in this case would be either SVSU or Delta. So it's actually one of only two programs in the state that has that opportunity. In this program, students are fully, I'm sorry, in this program, students are able to explore their careers and interests a lot easier than a normal school. Being on the college campus, you get all the college classes to choose from rather than a more set number of classes in a regular high school. Three different times, GLIBIC has been ranked one of the top schools of America by Newsweek, so we're very proud of that. And then since it started, we have earned over twenty-five thousand college credits for students in the program. And then like Mr. Summy said, we were able to start a Student Leadership Council last year for the program and with that, we were able to have a student that majored in graphic design actually designed a t-shirt for that, so that's just one of our opportunities that we have for them to be able to use the skills that they have earned and learned in the program itself. Also, we have hands-on experiences, we have a weekly science lab that the students are able to participate in, so not only are they learning chemistry in the classroom, but they're able to apply what they've learned into actual experiments in the labs at SVSU, which is state-of-the-art technology that they have there. I apologize, as a teacher, I'm told that it's good to be flexible. I was expecting to have a PowerPoint for you guys and then that wasn't an option, so I have it printed out here, so just bear with me a little bit. We also have a student, actually two now, that were able to participate in SVSU's neuroscience research, so that's actually on campus with SVSU, so their names are published in that, which is pretty awesome. And then we have another student, Caitlin Pierce, she was able to participate in, one of the very first students of SVSU to participate in the National Forensic Science Association Tournament. So that's not just GLIBIC itself, one of the very first of actually SVSU students, and that was in Santa Ana, California, so she was able to go all the way there with that, which is amazing. And then I had a little video for you, just saying what a student's perspective would be, so I will share my perspective for you. So being in the program, I started in my sophomore year, so now being in my plus-one year since I started so early, right now I actually have, I have fifty-nine credits and by the end of the year, I will have about seventy-three. And so I take classes both, like I said, towards my high school and my college credits, so by the end of this year, I will get my high school diploma and have seventy-three college credits. And then I haven't paid for books, classes, or anything like that, so the program is pretty remarkable. I know it's blessed myself and a lot of other students that have gone through it. We got out of there with more help than I believe a regular high school can offer, in my opinion, with my experience with transitioning to college, you have all the experience that you need and they guide you and direct you in applying for scholarships you need and different things like that. The staff is remarkable, they help you with everything that you need, and then you have one-on-one mentoring for the students, so I know that's something that we all really appreciate. And that's all I have for you, so I appreciate you guys letting us come in today and I appreciate you guys allowing innovative programs like GLIBIC to be in Michigan. Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to introduce to you Executive Director of Special Education, Erin Sinkowski.
Good morning, it's a privilege to be here today to speak with you. I have with me our Assistant Director of Special Education, Dave Krantz, and Dave serves as our liaison with the Michigan Department of Ed Office of Special Education in the Technical Assistance TA Provider role. Our department services approximately forty-five hundred students across Saginaw County with various exceptionalities. We operate four center programs, our Millet Learning Center, which is out in Bridgeport, the Transition Center, which is for our sixteen-to-twenty-six-year-old population, which is just down the hall from our PD Center. We operate a Deaf and Articulation Hearing Program out at Freeland Community Schools and we also operate a program for students with severe emotional impairments as a partnership with Bridgeport Spalding. Throughout all of our services, we have approximately three hundred staff members who are in every local school district, in every building, in every PSA in Saginaw County. We have approximately one hundred ancillary service providers who spend the majority of their days out in our local districts servicing students, so special education supervisors, physical therapists, occupational therapists, psychologists, social workers, you name it, we have it. Points of pride that I'm very proud of, things that our department are doing currently. We are really feeling as though we are leading the way with our role in general supervision. We have implemented a comprehensive system of technical assistance for our local school districts and we are in year three of implementation of that and that is a very exciting process where we're collaborating much more closely with our local districts to make sure that we are ensuring fate for all of our students. We are continuing to develop our partnerships across Saginaw County. We have over sixty business partners that work with our transition age students to ensure that they are having opportunities to be successful in employment before they are in competitive employment. And we are re-envisioning our center programs, we are providing high-quality services, we are looking at how we can meet the unique needs of all of our learners, and we are really moving that path forward. So I have with you today my two center program principals, I have Brigitte Urick, who is our Transition Center Principal, and behind her, I also have Cheryl Vincent-Taylor, who is our Millet Learning Center Principal, with a few of their students to talk about what they're doing.
Good morning, my name is Brigitte Urick and I am honored to be the principal here at the Transition Center. And I would like to introduce you to three of our students. First, we have Mike Well. Mike Well is nineteen years old, this is his third year in our program, one year in our work-based learning program when he was in high school and he's starting his second year at the Transition Center. And Mike Well wants to speak to you about his growth that he's made in regards to vocational skills. And they wrote these speeches, I just hope.
When I started in the work-based learning program, I participated in various work sites, which led me to my job focus of rural service. The skills I developed that I have made me a good worker, are first my behavior in dealing with people, I also learned how- I also learned how to be a good worker, which has led me to be, to gain a job here at Transition Center, here at this school.
Thank you, Mike Well. Next, we have Shariana. Shariana is in, she's twenty years old, she's in her fourth year here. Shariana participated two years in the work-based learning program and she's in her second year here at the SOAR program. And Shariana wants to talk to you about- And Shariana wants to talk to you about the personal growth that she has made since she started here.
When I started here, I was a hot mess. I liked the drama and made bad choices. At the Transition Center, I have learned how to communicate better, better act more appropriately, but most of all, I have gained self-confidence, so I no longer need to do the things that I did in the past.
Great job, Shariana. Thank you. And finally, we have Tristan. Tristan is 19 years old. He is in his third year here at the Transition Center. Tristan participated two years in the work-based learning program, and he's just starting our SOAR program. But Tristan has taken a different route. He is, he's worked a lot with community agencies. So he wants to talk to you about who he's partnered with and the success that he's currently having.
I'm in word-based learning. I participate in Job Club with MOS and Disability Network. I was working with MOS during post-studios, but I didn't like it. So I asked for, well, can I get my hand dirty? So they placed me at Work K Systems, where I work on machines. This summer, I average 60 hours a week. I'm now part-time while I go to school. I also got my job license this summer and moved into the department next door.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Taylor, and I'm Principal of the Millet Learning Center. I have my students come in. Millet is a center-based program for students, special education students with significant disabilities, ages 3 to 26. Through a partnership with Saginaw Public Schools, three of our 30 classrooms are located at Zewaki Elementary School, where the principal is my colleague Tina Munoz, who is also here with us today. They are going to sing for you this morning, and our teacher, Lisa McFarland, is going to introduce our group.
Good morning. Like Ms. Cheryl said, we are from Zewaki, and one unique thing about Zewaki School is that we are a leader in me school, which means that we follow the Covey seven habits of happy kids, or we're growing leaders over there with the help of our Principal, Tina Munoz, who's on-site along with Cheryl's help. We have a couple of songs that we sing to practice our habits so that we're growing leaders too, and we'd like to sing those for you right now. So here we go. We have one more, I don't do that. We have one more time to sing this verse, so please, let's do our moves.
Be proactive, you're in charge. Begin with the end in mind, success will be large. Put first things first, work then play. You should think win-win every single day. Be proactive, you're in charge. Begin with the end in mind, success will be large. Put first things first, work then play. You should think win-win every single day. Respect on the bus, in a teamer dress. Keeps me knowing that you can have it all. Responsible for yourself, knowledge is wealth. Keeps me knowing that you can have it all. With the seven habits, you will be a leader for the rest of your life. See first to understand, then to be understood. Together is better, synergize you should. Sharpen the saw, balance feels best. These habits will stop you from making life a mess. Respect on the bus, in a teamer dress. Keeps me knowing that you can have it all. Responsible for yourself, knowledge is wealth. Keeps me knowing that you can have it all. With the seven habits, you will be a leader for the rest of your life. Cause you can have it all. With the seven habits, you will be a leader for the rest of your life. See first to understand, then to be understood. Together is better, synergize you should. Sharpen the saw, balance feels best. These habits will stop you from making life a mess. Cause you can have it all. Yes, you can have it all. It all, it all, it all. Cause you can have it all. With the seven habits, you will be a leader for the rest of your life. Cause you can have it all. With the seven habits, you will be a leader for the rest of your life. You can have it all.
Executive Director of Technology, Aaron Schippert.
Thank you, Kathy. I also have my Assistant Director of Technology, Mark Quatter. Mark was responsible for bringing the filming crew today, so we'd want to give a special thanks to the filming crew from Chestening Union Schools, and Brett Russell and Tracy were responsible for me, and thank you, Mark, for doing that as well. What I'd like to do is focus, right there is my PowerPoint slide with all the details of a bunch of things that we do. Now, through the course of the meeting, I hope you have time to look at that. Right now, I just want to highlight a couple of things. One is that we do technology services for 10 local districts, and I'd like to highlight and under Mark's supervision, that that's a tremendous savings for the local school districts in Saginaw County. We're talking about tens of thousands of dollars because the efficiencies of the tech department. So I want that to be noted. We, in addition, have a fiber optic network that connects all the local districts called SAGNET. That also represents large savings to the districts because there's a server farm that resides right over there, and all of the servers for those districts is over there. And again, efficiencies save money for the local school districts who can then put that money back into what matters, and that's teaching and learning, for sure. Finally, I also am the RMC Director for RMC9 Saginaw and Midland. And that part of my job, I get to do a lot of professional development. I get to represent RMC with the co-op savings, which is a big deal. And again, those co-op savings save the local school districts a lot of money. My favorite part of my job is working with teachers, and I brought with me today Josh Boor from Merrill Schools and a student, and these are some of the things that we do when we do professional development training.
So, this is my first year in middle school. I've been an elementary teacher, and I was put into place of a Makerspace class, and I wasn't too sure what to do with it. And Aaron reached out to me and gave me some training, and the resources they give us are endless, and it gets the kids excited. They're learning coding. I think next, we're doing 3D printing. So none of that would be available to us at our district without being able to get it from them. This is my student, Grant Vedrody. He is a eighth grader and one of my top students in coding, and he's going to do a little demonstration flying a drone, but not with a remote control, by coding a flight plan that he decided on, so.
He was using a program called Drone Block, and he's connected Wi-Fi through Wi-Fi from the drone, or the drone, and now he's doing a series of codes in there, right? What do you want him to do?
I'm going to be launching it, and it's going to be doing a square and forward and yawing, and it's going to also do a flip.
And we should watch ourselves, right?
That was, by the way, possible because the RMC Association of Michigan granted me $20,000 in a small project to do this statewide. So I took that money, got a couple of other RMC Directors to help me, and we trained five different locations this year, from Macomb County to Inland Lakes, up north, Saginaw County to Muskegan. 155 teachers were trained, including Josh, and a drone was given to each of those teachers and two to the RMC Association. So again, we're super happy about doing that and super happy to have Josh and Grant here, that's for sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Aaron. Now, Saginaw County, SAGISD, the middle of our county, is one of our most valuable attributes, is the Chiawasi National Wildlife Refuge. That's why when you traveled south, you either had to come up on the east side of Saginaw County or the west side of Saginaw County, because we don't travel right through the Chiawasi National Wildlife Refuge. SAGISD sponsors the Hartley Outdoor Education Center, and I'm going to introduce to you our Coordinator and Director, Eric Rutherford.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. So Hartley Outdoor Education Center, we are owned and operated by the Saginaw Intermediate School District. We are a curriculum-based outdoor education program. Our main program is we do a three-day, two-night residential program for fourth, fifth, and sixth graders throughout Saginaw County and in the Great Lakes Bay region. So students come out, they stay for three days with their teachers, with my teaching staff, the rest of our staff. They go out, they explore. We do STEM-type programs. All of our science programs are Next Gen-aligned. We also offer outdoor pursuits and social study classes. So not only am I the Director, but I like to tell people that both of my children have been to Hartley, and actually, as a student, I attended Hartley, as this is our 45th year of offering outdoor education students, to students in our local area. And today, I'm fortunate to have Sophia Gumala, who is a sixth grader at White Pine Middle School, and she went to Hartley as a fourth grader with Hemmer Elementary School, and she actually attended with my son, so a little bit of connection there too. So Sophia's going to talk about her experience going to Hartley.
Hello. Today, I would like to tell you about my experience at Hartley. Hartley was one of the best experiences of my life. My favorite part about Hartley was the outdoor survival, where you had about an hour to build like a fort made out of sticks and wood and boil water with wood in a bucket. Right when we started, I knew it was going to be really fun. We had a nice group, and we worked really well together. And I didn't really know a lot of people in my group, so it was a really good bonding experience with them, and now some of them are some of my best friends. Another really fun activity was the outdoor recreation area. We went out later that night, and we went to this place, and it had like all different things. It had like a basketball court, a soccer field, it had all these different things. Soccer's my favorite sport, so I went there, and that just was a really fun way to end the night. Also, the counselors, they were really encouraging. They helped us put ourselves out there, and they really made the experience 10 times better. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to thank you for allowing us to showcase some of the programs we have here at the Intermediate School District. I'd like to finish up with some of our points of pride we have as an organization. One, we are steeped in the literacy work, and that's being led by Heather Falke. One, we are steeped in the literacy work, and that's being led by Heather Phelps. I don't know if she's still in the room, but we work with Michigan Department of Education on literacy related to the Grade 3 Reading Law. In fact, Michigan Public Radio just published a recent interview with Heather, and we're very proud that she represents SAGISD, and working to support our districts with the Grade 3 Reading Law. We are working hard on culture and climate. We mentioned the happiness advantage, Shawn Aker's work. We are steeping that in our organization. You see some of the orange bands choose to be happy or happy by choice. We have a Whole Child Initiative, and that Whole Child Initiative is from prenatal to adult. And we're very pleased with what we're working on, not only whole child, but equity across our region. We are trying to lead that effort forward in recognizing where our needs are with that equity matter for all citizens of our region. Last thing we're working on, or second to the last, is fair funding. Like you, we think fair funding is important to student success in Michigan, and we're stepping up to the plate on that. And then Transformation Zone work, our last partnership with the Michigan Department of Education. Our team here is taking that Transformation Zone work, not only working with our local school districts, but we are using the Regional Capacity Assessment and the District Capacity Assessment as our tool to create an ISD Improvement Plan. I'm very proud of the work of all these team members, of our students, and I thank everyone for preparing today. And I know we went way over our time, but we're honored to host you today. Welcome to Saginaw Intermediate School District.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stewart, and the entire Saginaw Intermediate School District team. Can we give them another round of applause, please? You are welcome to stay if you would like. You are also welcome to go about your business. Next item on the committee of the whole agenda is Presentation of Michigan Department of Education 2018-2019 Annual Review. Chief Deputy Superintendent and Deputy Superintendents will present the 2018-19 Annual Review. The report will be a reflection on the work of the Michigan Department of Education during the 2018-19 school year, with a focus on the Michigan Department of Education priorities of literacy, whole child, and prenatal through age eight. This presentation is informational and requires no board action. Here to present for us are Ms. Sheila Alice, Chief Deputy Superintendent; Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student, and School Supports; Dr. Scott Kennischeck, Deputy Superintendent for P-20 System and Student Transitions; Mr. Ross Fort, Special Assistant Finance and Operations; and Mr. Richard Lauer, Director of Preschool and Out-of-School Time Learning. There is, in fact, a PowerPoint presentation. Gentle people, it is your presentation. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Dr. Rice. I'm going to ask our tech folks if they have our PowerPoint presentation. If so, could you bring it up to the screen? FDE's annual review is an opportunity to share with you, State Board of Education members, as well as the members of the audience who work in the department that we have done this past year. Our annual review focuses the efforts starting in July of 2018 through June of 2019. This is the department's fourth annual review. It has three components to it, as previous annual reviews have had. It includes the narrative section, the student assessment section, as well as the ancillary information section. There is a hard copy of the annual review that you should have in front of you. There's also an online version. The online version has hyperlinks included in it, and the hyperlinks will take you to sites that have additional information about the work of the department. Those hyperlinks are noted as blue italicized type in the printed version. Again, this year, our work within the department stems from Michigan's Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Plan. If I can please draw your attention to the back cover of the annual review. On the back cover of the annual review, you will see components of the Top 10 &amp; 10 Plan. You will see Michigan Education Vision, Education Mission Statement, the guiding principles or values that provide the foundation for the Top 10 &amp; 10 Plan, as well as the seven goals. What isn't included there are the 44 strategies that are embedded in those goals and help to attain those goals. As Dr. Rice mentioned, during last month's State Board of Education meeting, our annual review, or sorry, our Top 10 &amp; 10 Plan is going to undergo a review. As strategic plans annually go through a review and revision process, the Top 10 &amp; 10 Plan was created almost four years ago. It was in February of 2016 that the State Board of Education approved the Top 10 &amp; 10 Plan. So it's long overdue for a review. We are going to start the review process this fall. The State Board of Education members will be involved in that process. Our goal is to bring to you in April of 2020, a Top 10 Plan that is more focused, more directional, that is more streamlined. It has more current and relevant language in it, as well as more directional language. We will also bring to you at that time, metrics that will tell us where we are in our status of becoming a Top 10 Education State. So these metrics we can use over time to progress monitor the work that we are doing and the progress that we are making to become a Top 10 Education State. So now, with that brief introduction, let's move into the annual review, beginning on the top of page two, please. Is that better? Sorry. Okay. Beginning on the top of page two. Last May at the State Board of Education Retreat, you may remember that the Deputy Superintendents and I provided the State Board with an overview of the in-depth work that we had been doing in the department as an executive leadership team on bringing coherence to the department. At that time, we shared with you that we had engaged in a book study using an external facilitator provided by the Great Lakes Comprehensive Center, and that book study was on the book Coherence by Michael Fulon and Joanne Quinn. One of our learnings from that book study was that a coherent organization is developed around a coherence framework. And there are four major elements to that framework. Focusing direction, creating collaborative cultures, deepening learning, and securing accountability. And at the center of that framework is leadership. The executive leadership team, we used this framework to help us identify what our focus direction was going to be in the department. And that was the establishment of our three priorities. And so if you would look, please, at the top of page three, you will see the three priorities listed. And they are literacy, whole child, and prenatal through age eight or P-8. These three priorities provide the focus for the work within the department last year and continue to drive our efforts within the department this year. You'll notice that our annual review is developed around these three priorities. We have a section on literacy, a section on whole child, a section on P-8. And so this morning, each of the deputies whose division takes the lead for the priority will give you some of the highlights of the many areas of work within our department. This work is cross-divisional, it is cross-office work, but each of the divisions takes the lead in coordinating that cross-office and cross-divisional work. And we're going to start with literacy, and I'm going to turn the presentation now to Dr. Kiesler, to give you a snapshot of the many projects in the area of literacy this past year.
Thank you, Sheila, and good morning, board members. I'm going to start with our graphic that shows some of our efforts around literacy. And what I really want to highlight about this graphic is the center of the graphic, where it says, "All Michigan children develop strong literacy knowledge, skills, and dispositions." While there are a number of pieces around our literacy work, I think one of the things we want to raise up and name very intentionally in the past and going forward especially is that this is really about children and their access to literacy skills. And that children are at the center of the work here. So while at a state level, we need to think about policies, and there needs to be literacy leaders, and we need professional, we need all these pieces, we can't ever lose sight of the fact that it's really about children in classrooms, children in a variety of settings, and their ability to become literate and open those doors for themselves going forward. So, to that end, we have four things we want to highlight, and these are in your report, starting on page three. We have been working to align our literacy support to schools in support of that child at the center, those instructional practices that most help students acquire their literacy skills that they need. And we highlight in the report, one of our intensive literacy supports, the My Bliss Initiative. But I think the thing we want to lift up is that we've been working very hard to make sure we are coherent around our literacy efforts. We need to speak with one voice around the skills and practices. We need to always work in concert, ensuring that every Michigan child has what they need to become literate, to be able to read, to be able to access what we want them to. We cannot be divided in our efforts. And so we've been working very intentionally at the department about, do we talk about literacy the same way? Are we pulling in the same direction? And so again, keeping that focus on all of our literacy supports, and very much as a state, highlight in this as an area where we pay particular attention. The second area we wish to highlight is access to professional learning. A key to improving literacy is improved instructional practices and increased supports for our educators across the state. So on page four, we include some data. I want to highlight, page four and five, I want to highlight two pieces that I think are particularly important. We have 538 individuals who represent school teams who've been trained in the essential instructional practices for early literacy, grades K-3, and on developing professional learning plans for their schools with ongoing supports provided. So that's kind of a very, that's on page four of your annual report. That's a more intensive form of professional learning. We really, while we've improved and expanded how preparation prepares educators to teach literacy and ensure literacy skills, there are many educators in the field now who need that ongoing support and training. So we're excited to see that number. We also consider these numbers to be somewhat baseline numbers. We have not tracked them before, so even though we're not starting our efforts now, we're starting to watch these numbers. And we really want to ensure that every Michigan educator has the appropriate training to support literacy. And then on page five, we have over 19, this is on the second chart, over 19,000 educators have been awarded sketches, those are those professional learning credits toward recertification, for participating in the Michigan virtual modules around the essential instructional practices. And these modules are something that Michigan won an award for, a telly for these modules and their quality and importance for the field. Oops. I had slides, I apologize. Those are the two charts that I just was talking about for the rest of the audience. The third thing we want to highlight is the online literacy resources. Through our partnership with the Library of Michigan and the Mel e-Ressources, there are a number of things available to students and parents, as well as educators. Those are on page five. The one I just wanted to share, my favorite, are the Two World Book resources, the World Book Early Learning and World Book Kids. Those are things my kids enjoyed, but there are a number of good resources listed there. And that's part of our effort to engage the whole family and community on our literacy efforts. And finally, we are committed to researching the literacy efforts, and I applaud the board for their leadership in this area. At our retreat, two retreats ago, you all asked important questions about our Read by Grade 3 law and what's happening around literacy in the state. And we partnered with our strategic research partners, the Michigan Education Research Institute, and we're just recently awarded a $5 million grant from the Institute for Education Sciences, a very competitive prestigious grant that we brought home to Michigan, thanks to your leadership and our partnership with the research community, to look at what's changing around instructional practices, what's improving, are we getting the outcomes for kids we need, especially in those early grades? So we are very pleased to be a state that's committed to using our data to improve our outcomes, and particularly in this area. And now, I'm going to be turning the presentation to my colleague, Mr. Fort.
Good morning. As you may recall from earlier presentations, the department is using a national model for the whole child, known as the WISC model. Whole school, whole community, and whole child. The whole child approach is an effort to transition our focus on narrowly-defined academic achievement to one that promotes long-term healthy development and academic success for all children. The WISC model is meant to demonstrate the supports needed for a child to be the best learner possible. So if you kind of look at the model, everything works from the child out, but it's wrapped, as our colleague Diane Golzinski says, Dr. Golzinski says, it's wrapped by the community with its arms. The coordinated policies, processes, and practices are developed that support learning and health. That's that white rim inside there. Together, these interwoven components assure that every child is healthy, safe, supported, engaged, challenged, for long-term success. Our department, our work as a department with the whole child priority assures that these components supporting the health and learning of every student are considered as important factors in the future success of every Michigan child. The goals of the whole child priority include providing evidence-based strategies and supports, aligning policies, funding, and resources to support the whole child's success, and ensuring Michigan's family engagement framework is developed and applied. The tenets of the whole child priority are health, engaged, challenged, safe, and supported. Each student enters school healthy and learns about the practices of a healthy lifestyle. Each student is actively engaged in learning and is connected to the school and community. Each student is challenged academically and prepared for success in college or further study. Each student learns in an environment that is physically and emotionally safe for students and adults. Each student has access to personalized learning and supported by qualified, caring adults. So now, as part of the annual report, I'm going to highlight a few things. School safety, chronic absenteeism, and nutrition, and some of our work around those areas. As mentioned in the tenets, safety is critical because students can't focus on learning if they feel unsafe. The department has several resources that we make available to school districts, and some of them are outlined in the report. Anti-bullying and cyberbullying policies. As you well know, what happens outside of school can also impact a student's life in school and their ability to learn. Districts are encouraged to provide training to students and staff on preventing, identifying, and reporting bullying. Model code of student conduct. As you know, back in June, you approved the latest version. Schools are provided guidance on how to reduce the number of suspensions and expulsions, look at individual circumstances, and use restorative practices to support students. The next one is chronic absenteeism. As you know, as a child that is not in school loses needed time for learning and educational experiences needed to apply to the learning. This leads to lower levels of literacy, loss in student learning, increased behavior problems, and possible dropout. Many school districts in Michigan recognize this as a major problem and are currently developing policies and procedures and practices through the whole child model, so all children are present and fully engaged. Finally, I'll give a couple examples of our work around the nutrition area. Nutrition for young children, this past year through participants of the Child and Adult Food Care Program, the CACFP, more than 8 million breakfasts, nearly 9.5 million lunches, over 13 million snacks, and almost 4.6 million suppers were served to children and adults in childcare centers, after-school at-risk programs, and family childcare homes. CACFP plays a vital role in improving the quality of childcare by making it affordable and providing those meals at reimbursement. One that we were really excited about this past year, I know everyone had the polar vortex, but we were able to provide school meals even in emergencies. When children who rely on meals are away from school, they are at risk for hunger. MDE recommends that each school district include a winter weather plan on how to feed students. As I said, this past January, we had the polar vortex, and over 900 meals were served between 17 districts and schools that opened their doors for lunch. This means that children can get the meals they would normally miss during snow days or other types of challenges, enclosures, if children were able to get to the school district safely. That's all I have. I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Kay in prenatal through eight.
Before I pass a microphone to Dr. Kennischeck, just a Kyle Garant, who would be sitting at the table presenting the whole child. the table presenting the whole child, in keeping with the whole child, Kyle is representing the Michigan Department of Education at a Student Mental Health Summit that's being held at the Lansing Center, and it's sponsored by MDE and the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals. And so, now, we'll move on to prenatal through age.
Great. Thank you, Sheila. So, as noted, the third and final priority that we've been working on is this priority area around prenatal through age eight. And we really feel that this particular priority area is the foundation for a larger P-20 system. And if you think about this, experiences that children and families have during this age frame, they're really experiences that are obtained in a mixed delivery system. It's not really one way or one avenue for families and students to experience these things. It's done through early care, education providers, and a multitude of programs and services. In terms of the work included in the annual report around prenatal through age eight, that work really focuses on these seven areas. It focuses on families and the whole child, which demonstrates alignment and coherence with our whole child priority. It supports, it provides support for continuity, coherence, and for all families and children. It promotes intentional collaborative and aligned professional development. It promotes and provides for seamless transitions. Again, this prenatal through age eight service timeframe involves a number of transitions. It includes aligned and comprehensive standards, as well as using early learned-centered pre-K instructional practices. It promotes deep knowledge about the comprehensive development of children, and it really provides, again, as I stated earlier, the foundation for durable and long-lasting family, community, and school partnerships. So, very tangible examples of this prenatal through age eight work, there are a number listed in the annual report. I'd like to call out four of them. First is the Family Engagement Framework work that's been going on at the Michigan Department of Education. So, both internal and external stakeholders have developed what we're calling the My Family, Family Engagement Framework. And this particular tool will be shared with folks to provide guidance to educators, districts, schools, families, and communities as they themselves plan, implement, and evaluate strategies across multiple programs for effective family engagement. To guide this work, a family engagement stakeholder group was pulled together comprised of parents, external stakeholders, internal stakeholders, and MDE staff. And they crafted this definition regarding family engagement. We define family engagement as a collaborative relationship between families, educators, providers, and partners to support and improve the learning, development, and health of every learner. And they developed five principles around family engagement which make up the toolkit that will be provided shortly. And those principles include trusting relationships, that families are engaged and supported as partners in their child's education, that family engagement efforts are purposeful and intentional and clearly identify learner outcomes, that family engagement efforts are tailored to address all families so all learners are successful, and that positive learning environments contribute to engagement in learning. So, a lot of work done around family engagement. The department has also been engaged in work around early childhood workforce, education workforce activities. Some of you around the board table have been involved in those. In 2018, MDE started a very intentional focus on the early childhood education workforce issue through a grant from NASB, or the National Association of State Boards of Education. And that grant was renewed again for the 2018-2019 school year. At the same time, and in conjunction with this grant, the chief, or the Council of Chief State School Officers also provided a grant specific to early childhood education workforce. And due to their similarities, the activities of both of those grants were coordinated into one work plan. And these grants helped the Michigan Department of Education connect workforce investment strategies and resources to improve training, effectiveness, and working conditions for early care and early childhood professionals. We've also done a great deal of work around the essential instructional practices in language and emergent literacy, birth to age three. Dr. Kiesler talked about these essentials later on in the student's experience, pre-K and on forward. And what, the work around this has actually been backed up to the birth-to-age-three literacy essentials. And the purpose of this document is to increase Michigan's capacity to improve children's literacy. We identified a set of research based upon evidence-based practices where literacy was the focus of professional development throughout the state. And the idea is to improve language and literacy experiences in infant-toddler years, and the fact that this has the potential to improve the reading by third grade outcomes. This demonstrates alignment and coherence. The final priority area that I'd like to talk about is the Teach Scholarship. So, this is a scholarship that's a statewide program designed to help childcare centers, teaching staff, preschool teachers, family childcare providers, group homeowners, center directors, early childhood professionals, and administrators meet their professional development goals while continuing their current employment in the early childhood setting. So, we've done a lot of work around this, partnering with a lot of individuals. I have a long list here, not going to read all of them, but I do want to share some so you know and understand the partnerships that we have. We've worked with Washington County Community College, Bay College, Mid-Michigan College, Lansing Community College, the Kibonaw Bay Ojibwa Community College, as well as Mott, and as well as offering training regionally to providers in Grand Rapids, Traverse City, and Dearborn. And so, the department has done a great deal of work with multiple partners across the state around this Teach Scholarship. So, as we look to streamline the top 10 and 10 in the months ahead, as Sheila spoke earlier of, we've discussed utilizing an early childhood metric as a measure. Again, Sheila mentioned a focus on metrics. To that end, I would like to invite Richard Lauer to the table to share some early childhood data as a first step in a broader conversation around metrics. Richard?
Thank you for having me. So, GSRP's accountability model, the Great Start Writing Program, which is our state pre-K for four-year-olds, is multifaceted. Today, I'm showcasing two aspects of the model that reflect data at the program and child level to start this conversation. First, I'm presenting at the national level a metric on program quality that I brought before the board a couple times in history in the last several years, but I want to specifically talk about the fact that this metric is the only national metric we have. It's produced by the National Institute for Early Education Research at Rutgers University. It's been in place since 2003. There's yearbooks every year since 2003 to present that showcases apples to apples every state, including DC and a couple territories, on the same 10 benchmarks of quality for program, and measures every state accordingly that has a state preschool program. And so, this national metric is able to track state by state. And to point out where we have grown over the last couple of years, and where our national ranking vis-à-vis other states have been, and where we tie and where we excel, but where we currently stand for this, and there's always a year lag in terms of reporting, but where we currently stand is that we are only one of three states that meet all 10 national benchmarks. And there is an asterisk by 1718 because NEAR did refine and raise the rigor bar on benchmarks. And in terms of incorporating, one of the benchmarks is where states actually utilize research and evaluation of their state pre-K model as one of the benchmarks was put into place in 1718 that was not there in previous years. Michigan has been researching its program since 1995, and many states who had previously had all 10 benchmarks actually fell in rankings because they did not previously research and evaluate their programs as Michigan had in the past, and where we continued to rise, they fell. So, I just want to make that note that we continue, and I expect as the new yearbook comes out in May of next year, we will continue to excel in this area. The other aspect I want to highlight is at the state level in terms of accountability around child-level outcomes. Again, because we have been so research and evaluation focused on GSRP over the decades, we are able to showcase our impact on children. And so, this is something that we've been able to showcase in the research aspect, but now from a census-level population, we've been working with SEPI over the last couple of years to become more sophisticated in utilizing our data within the Michigan Student Data System to showcase our impact on M-Step, utilizing the M-Step data at third grade based on whether the children were in GSRP or not. And so, what I have here is third-grade M-Step data for 1718. Again, due to timing and data lag, I have 1718 data, even though 1819 just came out, I'm able to provide this at this point in time. This is for ELA in math I'm going to be able to showcase here and show you how our GSRP children as a whole and a few different subgroups on the subsequent slides. What we have here are the percentage performance on proficient and advanced proficient for math on the left, ELA on the right, compared to their peers. So, that's what no GSRP-dash-ED is economically disadvantaged peers means. So, what you'll see there is in both categories, GSRP children outperform their same comparison peer group. Granted, there are, I'm going to put the caveat in there, GSRP does serve children at or below 250%. The economically disadvantaged group is at 185% or below, so there is a slight difference. And so, I do acknowledge that, but that is the closest proxy group that SEPI is able to give us in terms of comparison. And then, the three subgroups. Within the equity lens, the three largest population groups that are served by GSRP are within the white or Caucasian, the African-American, and the Hispanic. What is interesting and emerging and consistent with our research is showcasing that the biggest impact subgroup for GSRP and impact area is within the African-American subgroup. And I don't have it up here, but it is within African-American male subgroup. And that is an important equity lens to have here. So, I'm showcasing this here, but we do have impacts across all three or both, African-American and Hispanic here. On the next slide, and that's both for ELA, and next slide. And then, I wanted to showcase here the issue, or the subgroup which students with disabilities. Again, math on the left, ELA on the right, and showcasing the fact that GSRP does not have a specific set aside for number of children with disabilities that it must serve. However, GSRP does serve children with IEPs, a significant number, nearly 3,000 children with IEPs every year out of the 37,140 last year. So, a good number of children with IEPs are within the GSRP program. And so, in terms of knowing that we have a disproportionate positive impact on children with IEPs is a good thing to know, and that we are having that impact over and above their peers. And then, so, just an overall outcome is that this is the number of children we served last year, and that it represents 55% of the eligible population at or below 250% of the federal population rate.
Great. Thank you, Richard, for the metrics conversation. We appreciate that. I'm going to turn it back over to Sheila Ellis for the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Scott. Going back to the, well, first, let me say that the purpose of sharing some of the data with you is to begin to have a conversation with the board on the type of metrics that are available. And today, since we were talking about prenatal through age eight, we thought we would share with you some early childhood data as part of our larger conversation that we will be having on an ongoing basis about metrics and metrics that we can use to track the progress that Michigan is making to become a top education state. So, going back to the annual report, there are some additional major efforts within the department that occurred last year. There are three of them that I would like to highlight. Beginning on page 16, we have Equity and Education Initiative. On page 17, the Path Forward Initiative. And on page 18, the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process Initiative. All three of these major efforts involve the collaboration with our external stakeholders, partners, and ed organizations. Now, we'll move to the next part of, or the second part of the annual review, which is the state assessment data. As in past reports, the student assessment data is provided on the statewide assessments, student assessments that the Michigan Department of Education administers. These assessment information can be found, can be found beginning on page 19 and continuing through page 29. What you will see on these pages are the state assessment results for the M-Step, for the Michigan Merit Examination, as well as for My Access. You will see reported the results for all students by grade level and content area, as well as by each of the subgroups. In addition to the assessment data, we also have links in the report that will take you to other sites on the MDE website that contain information about students and schools, and they include the My School data portal, as well as the parent dashboard for school transparency. While we are on the topic of assessment data, I'd like to clarify some misinformation that continues to be perpetuated, and some of this is by the media. The misinformation is that the proficiency scores and results on the third-grade M-Step can be equated to the percent of students who will be eligible for retention based on the Read by Grade Three law. And that is incorrect information. It is a misrepresentation of information. And I'd like to share with you the two major reasons for that. First of all, the third-grade ELA M-Step assesses both reading and writing. The Read by Grade Three law states that students who will be subject to retention will be so based on reading only. The second major reason is because the M-Step for ELA assesses grade-level content standards. So, for third-grade ELA M-Step, it assesses third-grade standards for reading and writing. The Read by Third Grade Law states that students that would be subject to possible retention will be so based on the students who are reading one grade level or more below third grade. So, for those two major reasons, M-Step assesses reading and writing, and M-Step assesses content standards at third-grade level for reading and writing. We cannot equate the percent of students who are proficient or not proficient with the percent of students who will be eligible for third-grade retention based on the Read by Grade Three law. Knowing that, the Michigan Department of Education enlisted the knowledge and experience of technical experts along with Michigan educators to go through the third-grade ELA M-Step and select reading-only items, and using those reading-only items created a distinct cut score, a unique and distinct cut score. So, if I can ask you to look at page six of the annual review, you will see the cut score listed there, and you will see that the cut score for determining students who would be subject to retention based on the Read by Grade Three law would be students who scored a 1252 or lower on the third-grade ELA M-Step. The Department of Education continues to attempt to clarify this information with the media, as well as with the public, as we are doing today, taking this opportunity during the annual review presentation. And now, moving on to the final part of the report, which is to share with you some additional ancillary information. Beginning on page 30, we have our Michigan Teacher of the Year for 2018-19, which is Laura Chang, second-grade teacher from Sunset Lake Elementary School and Vicksburg Community Schools. We also have listed the Michigan Teacher Leadership Advisory Council for 2018, which includes the Regional Teachers of the Year, as well as the Michigan Teacher of the Year. On page 30, we have our State Board of Education members. I'd also like to recognize you for your leadership in the field of education and the state of Michigan. Also like to acknowledge two former State Board of Education members who served for a portion of time, which the annual review reflects, which is Dr. Richard Zeilie and Eileen Weiser. And also, one of the last page of the report is to acknowledge the MDE leadership. That's on page thirty-two. There are links to all of us on that page if you are using the online version, so that you are welcome to contact us. And then finally, in wrapping up, I'd like to thank everyone in the department who played a role in creating the annual review for 2018-19. It truly was a collaborative effort, so a shout-out to everyone who was involved in the development and in the publication of it. I'd like to acknowledge the State Board of Education members for your ongoing support and encouragement to the department. And I'd like to acknowledge the 500-plus staff members who work in the department, who every day, either directly or indirectly, their work influences the success of the 1.5 million school-aged children in the state of Michigan. That concludes our presentation this morning. We thank you very much for allowing us to share with you the annual review for 2018-19 for the Michigan Department of Education.
Thank you to our presenters. Board members, are there any questions before we pivot? President Albridge.
So. Okay. So thank you very much for the presentation, and it's very helpful to be able to go through this, but I just had one quick question, and I'm really glad that you addressed the third grade reading bill and how the, you can't just take the numbers at face value. You have to put a little more work into it. But my question is, I'm still, I'm still confused at how you can even come up with a cut score based on a test that doesn't necessarily, isn't testing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. And so can you talk a little more about that process? Because it almost seems like you need something else to look at if, if, if all we're doing is coming up with a cut score and yet the test isn't appropriate for what we're trying to measure.
The answer to your question is that, that is an area of, that we relied on, the technical expertise of people who have backgrounds in the area of assessment. They went through the test item by item and looked at each of the items and determined items that tested only reading. And then using those items began to go through the scaled scores, scale by scale score, by each scale score individually to get to a cut point, which they believed was at least one year or more below third grade level. So they started with the cut score for third grade. They counted off the items and went through the items to determine the cut score for students who would be reading at least one or more grade level below. We're required by the law to use the state assessment, and so we use the state assessment and use that process for determining the cut score.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just a follow-up question. So when you say cut score, are you referring to the cut score based only on those questions that are related to reading or the overall cut score of the test?
The overall cut score. The overall cut score that a student would receive for the assessment. Students receive a score for the assessment, so it would be using the score that the student received for their assessment.
So it's possible that a student could actually be reading at grade level but not writing at grade level and still be held back based on the third grade reading bill?
The answer to that is no. It is possible that your writing could drag down your ELA assessment result, but if your reading is at grade level, you would not be retained based on the third grade reading law. Because it is, it is not your ELA assessment result, but rather your reading result, which is of issue.
Am I the only one who's confused by this? Because if it is, then we can just have this conversation offline.
And, and there's also another option where if the belief is that perhaps that it's not a true representation of the student's ability, that an alternative assessment can be administered to the student.
Okay.
Dr. Pugh.
I have a couple of questions. One is related to President Albrecht's questions. And looking at the cut scores, has this been, or will it be validated, or will there be reliability testing that's done on the methodology that's being used?
I'm going to turn to our, I'm going to turn to Vanessa Kiesler. What I can say is that we, we monitored that result this year. We, actually, we started last year with the 2018 results. We monitored it again this year with the 2019 results. We did that for two years in a row to verify that it was getting, limiting the number of students who truly were reading a year or more below grade level.
Did we get the methodology? I remember the cut score and, but just how they arrived at this and maybe looking at some of the data that you're talking about.
So you had a couple of questions about validity and reliability. The procedure used to set the cut was called the Bookmark Standard Setting Procedure, which is a nationally verified, the psychometric people agree it's the process to you. So it's kind of like, think of the corollary in your different areas of expertise. It's like the best way to do standard setting. We don't, and we do that so it's not just the department thinking of what we think is the best way, but people who spend their whole careers studying how to do standard setting, which some psychometricians do. We can talk about whether or not we think that's interesting, but they do spend their whole careers studying it. So we use that procedure to set it. To Sheila's point, we looked, so reliability also says, does it measure consistently? And we got fairly consistent numbers. It wasn't exactly the same, but it wasn't five one year and 20 the next year. That would say something weird is going on. And then there's a validity question, which is, is it getting the right kids? Is it really actually flagging kids who should be potentially considered for retention? That is something that, as we work toward implementation and as districts report what they did, did they retain the child? Did they give them a good cause exemption? And working with our research partners, understanding like, did we find the right kids, so to speak, or did we flag kids who, when you looked at other kinds of data, the M-Step was not coherent with the other results? So we don't have a great answer yet on the ultimate validity, but we do know we used a reliable and valid procedure. We're seeing consistent results, and now we have to see how it plays out in terms of giving good information about students for the purpose it was intended.
Thank you. And if, yeah, if we could get any of the data that you've already, that you're looking at from year to year, that would be good. And looking at, and definitely happy that we're not seeing the numbers that we thought that we were going to see retained initially, but I guess my concern still is that there are children that will be retained. And there, you know, we know that there's data that shows that that can be counter to what we're trying to do. The other issue that I have is the gaps of disparity, the gaps between race and economically disadvantaged. And I know at one time we were looking at 80 percent African American, 66 percent Hispanic Latino, when we were looking at the test scores. Can you, and I, you've given us this data, but can you tell us what those gaps look like for race, as well as economics?
Yes, we can, we can get that data to you. So we'll be able to show you the total percent of students in eighteen that would have been eligible, nineteen that would have been eligible, and then we can break it down by ethnicity, by race.
But we're still seeing those gaps between race, as well as economic. I have some other questions that are not related to test scores, but the rest of the presentation, but I'll, I'll pause for a minute.
Fair enough. Does anybody else have any questions about the Read by Grade Three? Dr. Pritchett.
Okay, thank you. I'm with Dr. Albrecht right now. I'm a little confused. So next year, Suzie in third grade is taking her M-Step, and on that M-Step, there's going to be writing questions or activities and reading. Then a score is going to be produced. When, when it needs to be determined whether she met this new cut score in reading, will only the reading items be looked at, or will the writing items be looked at?
Only the reading items are being used. Only the reading items.
Okay.
We separated the reading items from the writing items.
So it's not going to be the total scale score? There'll be another scale score? And this may be getting too far into the weeds, but I, as a parent then, am I going to be able to see that or understand that scale score? Because now I'm going to get two results. I'm going to get a third grade ELA result that's going to say whatever. And then I'm going to be told, by the way, you know, your child didn't make this cut score in reading, and I realize this is very confusing for the public anyways, but the parent then will be given two scale scores and tried to...
The parent will get a separate letter.
Okay.
And the separate letter will explain the score that the child received and how the score was, found the child eligible for retention, and then tell the parent what the parent's options are for going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fekdo.
So when, when would the parents get that score? How soon? Before the kid, the child starts or would start fourth grade?
Yes. It'll, it'll, the SEPI will be sending the letters to parents before the end of the school year. As visiting school districts and as Dr. Rice is visiting school district, they are telling us when their school year, school year ends. We want to make sure that the schools and the parents receive those letters prior to the end of school year.
Okay. I also had a question. So, so it looks as if there's going to be some communities that are hardly touched and some communities that are going to be heavily touched. So maybe the aggregate average across the state is not that high. But, you know, in Detroit, where the test scores have tended to be lower and there are areas of high poverty, I'm just wondering if you have any predictions about the results of this for next year, especially for the hard-hit communities, and what the department is doing to address that?
If we, if we could focus on the percentage in eighteen, the percentage in nineteen, and we can roughly assume that it's going to be relatively similar in, in twenty. So if you could, if you could focus on those two percentages.
Yes, the percentage in eighteen was about 5 percent. The percentage in nineteen was 4.1 percent.
With pretty significant differences across communities. So the idea that this hits all communities equally, to your point, not accurate. It disproportionately adversely affects working-class and poor children, disproportionately adversely affects children of color.
Are there any, is there any preliminary data on what to expect and what plans to address those and discuss?
We have been looking at the data that we had based on last year and the year before. We've communicated to the school districts, encouraging them to, one, look at their data. Let me go back to the chart for a minute. When you look at the chart, you'll see in the chart that there is also a middle range, a middle range that says, these are the students that aren't subject to retention. However, these are the students who would benefit from additional resources and services. So we have been communicating that to schools and districts, you know, look at your children who are on the cusp and ensuring that they're getting the interventions, the resources, the services. We are providing the essential practices, modules for these essential practices, our literacy coaches. We've been communicating the cut points at our conferences.
Vanessa, anything else you want to add?
Do you want to discuss for, briefly, the Gaunen work on the literacy essentials previously mentioned?
Yes. The Department of Education has partnered with the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Agencies, specifically their General Education Literacy Network, to create the 10 essential practices that should be occurring in every literacy classroom, every single, every day, touching every single child. We have partnered with them in creating those practices. It also includes the representation from Michigan State University, as well as the University of Michigan. As Vanessa shared with you, we, we created the essentials, and then we created training modules to go along with them. Vanessa shared with you this morning was the number of practitioners who have been trained in using those modules. So we are providing, I would say, for the very first time in the state of Michigan in close to 30 years, the best practices for teaching literacy instruction, both reading and writing.
Are the resources more concentrated in the places where they need it the most? Or expected to need it the most?
The resources are available to every school and district throughout the state, and we provide training available to all the schools and districts throughout the state.
The, there have been thousands of educators trained on the literacy essentials to date, more this year. It's not to say that that's adequate. It's to say it's a growing movement. Ms. Tilly.
I know that there are opportunities for parents to opt out. Can we get that in writing so we know the language?
We'd be happy to provide that for you.
Thank you.
That's also, I think, importantly, something that we are working with districts on to make them aware of the opt-out process. That's a parent opt-out process. That's not an educator opt-out process. And so it's important that we make parents aware of what they are permitted to do and consider under the law. Other...
To that, to that point, Dr. Rice, we have toolkits that we've made available to schools and districts for parent communication purposes.
Okay, thank you. Other, yes, Ms. Snyder.
You mentioned that there might be an alternative assessment available. Is this for students that would be 1252 or lower? And if that's the case, what would that look like?
That would be an alternative standardized assessment that schools, districts could use. Perhaps it could be the NWEA, it could be the I Ready Assessment, it would be another assessment that the school could use to determine that the student is reading on grade level or if below, how far below grade level.
So this is like for a student that scored this on the M-Step, but then maybe another standardized assessment isn't consistent with that?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions on Read by Grade Three? More broadly beyond Read by Grade Three. Dr. Pugh.
For Read by Grade Three, as well as some of the other items, really like all the top three priorities, how will the current budget impact that? I mean, I know with literacy, we're sitting in an ISD. It was proposed that ISDs didn't have to pay the 50 percent match dollars. I think that was wiped out. Literacy coaches, I don't know where we are. I think that we didn't get as many as we wanted to get. Go on and on, but where are we budgetary-wise? And how is that going to impact, impact the work that we've set out to do?
So I can, excuse me, I can speak briefly to the prenatal through age eight priority. Some, some positives and some negatives. The budget that was approved did include additional dollars for childcare providers at that very early age to, to move them up to as close as we can to that 75th percentile, which was very encouraging for us. The budget also included an additional $60 million for children with disabilities, students with disabilities. On the flip side, the governor had proposed expanding GSRP, and that particular program, and those dollars were not allocated. And so from the P8 side, certainly additional investments in childcare, special education, but not in GSRP.
Just my other question is, as it relates to adding metrics to the, to the document, I know we've talked a lot about CQI. Are we going to be able to put some of those process measurements within to look at how we're moving forward?
Dr. Pugh, help us out with the acronym.
Continuous Quality Improvement.
Thank you.
We're in an ISD, so I know they know what that means.
There's no question. ISDs are, are replete with acronyms.
Yes, Dr. Pugh, we will be bringing to you periodically over the next number of months, data sets for you to take a look at, give us your feedback on, give us your input on. We will use the information that we gleaned from you to bring back to you, and the information we gleaned from the field, to bring back to you some recommended metrics for your consideration.
No, if we're going in the right direction or the wrong direction, what are the levers that we're turning that are helping us or, or that are hurting us? And I just, you know, I talk, I know we talked about the equity in education, and I know we talked... we talked at our retreat about making sure that we were inclusive, and I just hoping that we've moved in that direction. And then, again, as we're talking about equity, I just want to go back to the 3rd grade reading because I'm sure everyone in the audience knows that this was not something that, that if not all of us, most of us on this board, we were not for the retention portion. And as we have looked at the scores, and we do know that looking at 3rd grade reading, looking at the M-Step versus looking at the new cut scores, while there has been great improvements, as, as Michelle has brought up in others, there are still areas that are going to be very hard-hit. There are populations, there are African-American children, there are Hispanic-Latino children that are going to be hard-hit by this. So I don't want us to be celebrating, but it does look a lot better. But I was just reading recently, and I know recent legislation that was there to remove the retention, and because of the cut scores looking better, I know that was one of the reasons why it, that legislation may not move forward. But there are still areas, geographical areas as well as students, that will definitely be hard-hit by this.
There's no question about that. And we can bring those, those differences, those dichotomies back to you and, and share those publicly. That there's a statewide average of estimate just above 4% that would be subject to retention. That's very different from, that affects all jurisdictions uniformly. And in communities of color, that percentage is much greater. It's, you know, twice as much and then some.
Right, and if we can talk about it? When we talk about this, it's almost like you're engaging.
I agree with you. I think it's, it's well-taken. It's a point well-taken. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, quickly, thank you, Dr. Rice. On the seventh slide, it talked about literacy, and I'm glad we're doing a lot. However, I just want to make sure, not right now, but I really do think in the, in the near future, I'd like to hear something about the kind of literacy training. I know there's essentials, instructional practices in literacy, but we just, this past week, got an email regarding striving for literacy event. And I have some moms that do all, that are really into education for the last 20 years, and one of them did some digging and looked at this organization's Facebook page, and they had a link to an NPR article that made it very clear that the best practices in literacy once thought, or maybe currently thought, are wrong and bad. And so there are bad literacy training and good literacy training. And I know some think it's what is good is bad and what is bad is good. And I know that there's debate. And so I just would prefer to know what we're doing specifically, whether we have chosen one side or the other, and maybe we're going to be wrong, or why we think we're right. You know, this article talks about, they were shocked as educators dove in and looked at the theories behind the training and that they were completely wrong and bad and, you know, not helpful at all. So I just, you know, I don't want to get into it right now, but I do think it's good that we're doing something. I want to make sure that something is actually helpful and the best. And I, and I know that there's debate about that, so I'd like to at least put it on the table and make sure it's clear which avenue we're choosing, or maybe we're choosing all of them, or...
We would, we would be happy to share a presentation on the literacy essentials. I think there's a real value to that. They've been well-received across the state. I was in the UP last week. They were well-received in the UP, across the eastern UP, at a school of 38, at a school of 115, at a school of 540. Well-received, well-received in the lower peninsula. I mean, but we'd be happy to share those and share the research foundation associated therewith as well. I think it's an important point. I think we should always be about looking at what the research foundation of what we do is, because the reality is, is what passes for gospel today is proven to be often inaccurate later. And so we, we welcome the opportunity to share that with you publicly. Are there any other questions, either about Read by Grade 3 or beyond Read by Grade 3, or any thoughts associated therewith? Ms. Tilly?
Just a quick comment, and I think I said this last month, but to just further break down the statistics, the numbers, that in some classrooms, the whole class could be held behind or close to the whole class in some districts.
I think it's, it's a, it's a good point, and though we're not going to provide class-by-class data here, the point is well-taken. And I think people need to understand that this begins with what children experience 0 to 4, 0 to 5, prior to school. It courses into and moves straight through school, including the conditions associated with the education of children in school and the inequities of education across schools. So the idea somehow that once our children are in our schools, they are experiencing largely the same thing, that's not accurate, and I think the board is well-aware of that. So point well-taken, and we will share, again, those, those differences, cross groups for the, for the board, based on 2018 data, and if we have them already, 2019 data as well. Anything more on the report as presented? Going once, twice, thrice? Let me just share a couple of things. We are developing the metrics with you in top 10 and 10. We are not presenting them, we are developing them with you. We are presenting data sets, as Sheila Alice points out to you, for your review and your consideration. And you will make a determination ultimately of what data points we need to underscore, we need to focus on. I will point out two here today. The first is, we are one of four states in the country, one of three straits in the country, you know, superintendents have trouble counting, one of three states in the country that have met all 10 near-quality standards for early childhood education. That's a big deal. I understand it's an input data point, not an output data point, but, you know, after all, we're talking about little ones. There's a limit to what sort of output data you can get for 48-month-olds. So that's a, that's a piece, and it's an important piece. Another metric that I ask you to consider today, and I'm going to keep, we're going to keep putting these in front of you, we're going to keep pulsing for your, your thinking, 55% of our children, 37,140 of our GSRP-eligible children, received GSRP services last year. 55%, and that standard is 250% of poverty. So that is not a high-bar standard, and yet only 55% of our children were, were receiving GSRP services. 45% not, and no one above 250%. Not to say that nobody above 250% received early childhood education, not my point, but didn't, wasn't able to receive GSRP services. You know, oftentimes what happens with our families, without getting too deeply down this rabbit hole, but oftentimes what happens with our families is the children who are poor and working-class discernibly receive, and those who are middle-class or above, receive, and those who are just above a cut line, just above 250% of poverty, for example, do not receive. So they, in many cases, are just as needy as children just below. They just don't, they don't get the benefit of. So I'm not saying that we ought not to fully serve those below, we certainly should, but we also ought to consider, as the governor's budget did, a movement from 250% to 300% of poverty to serve an additional swath of kids. The research shows clearly that we need to do education like they vote in Chicago, early and often. And it's, it's got to be a persistent drumbeat, and I would urge you to have a couple of input metrics in this early, early level. We've got to be tracking them, we've got to be pushing them, we've got to be drumbeating around moving these metrics. No metrics, no direction. Good metrics and an opportunity to drive improvement for kids. As the expression goes, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Board, we are presently at 11:32, and what I would propose to you is a, an agenda change. We are 32 minutes behind schedule, and what I would propose to you, Board, is that we move to the presentation without objection from the Office of Partnership Districts. If we could do that before lunch, break for lunch, and then move forward. Do I hear any objection to that agenda change? Hearing none. Dr. Pearson? Dr. Pearson is the Director of the Office of Partnership Districts. He is here to present to us an update on Saginaw Public Schools 24-Month Review of Goal Attainment Structured Conference. Dr. Pearson?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. There is no slide show because we conducted yesterday the review of goal attainment, so therefore didn't, wasn't able to put together a slide. Yesterday, we found that the Saginaw City Public Schools were on track at the 24-month review of goal attainment. So let me review. At the end of the RGA 18-month review, if you're not on track, then you have to have a 24-month review. We had that 24-month review yesterday for Saginaw. They had five process benchmarks that we were reviewing, so happy to say they were five for five. And examples of those process benchmarks were a reduction in truancy, a reduction in number of suspensions for students, a reduction in the number of students that were sent to the main office, and a reduction of students that are disruption, causing disruption in class. On the state benchmarks, we're in elementary schools, a CSI school, and Saginaw High School is a CSI high school. And on math, they were successful meeting their benchmark at the elementary and the high school, and they were not successful meeting the ELA benchmark at the elementary or the high school. But you have to attain 1/3 of your benchmarks if you use state data. And so they were at 50% with the outcome, state data, so they were on track, and they were on track for their process benchmark. So seven out of nine total. I do want to compliment the Superintendent, Dr. Roberts, and the board. They seem to work very well together. I always have side conversations with people when I'm at these meetings. I talked to three different board members. Of course, I talked to Dr. Roberts, I talked to the union president, and I talked to the elementary principal, high school principal, and then some of the central office staff. There's a new elementary principal at the CSI school that we were evaluating yesterday. I was greatly impressed with the direction she's taking that school. They are really focusing on data, so I thought that was a real quality point for the school district. They just implemented a new ELA curriculum and the resources that go with that. So could be some of the drop in ELA scores. You know, it takes a while when you implement new curriculum and new materials. So even though it's a three-year agreement with our partnership districts, we're in the third year of the elementary and high school, they're around one, around one district. So when you implement a new curriculum in the third year, it's difficult to assess that right away. They have 360 teachers at the school district, there are 13 vacancies still. That continues to plague partnership districts. 13 seems low, I guess, a little bit, but, you know, not to me as an ex-superintendent. That's, that's, that is an area that we are going to try to work on with a lot of our districts. So there are no vacancies at the CSI Elementary and High School, though. So that was good to hear yesterday. I think Saginaw works well with the ISD. There's a lot of compliments in terms of the things that they offer and how they're working together. And it was very, very good. So it was nice to see that they were on track. A year from now, then we have to go to the EPA, the Evaluation of Partnership Agreement, and they have different goals, not benchmarks, but they have goals that they have to meet. So we'll see, and hopefully they'll be successful, and we'll go from there. I did talk to another citizen, very, I had a nice conversation with that citizen, and he had some good things to say about the systems that are put in place in Saginaw, and that's, you know, near and dear to my heart, as I've talked to you before. You know, economically disadvantaged districts, it's very difficult to really vastly increase proficiency. And Saginaw's at 81%, Bridgeport Spalding's at 86%, so it's, it's difficult. But this gentleman, the citizen, talked about the systems that are being put in place and the impression that he has that the district is moving in the right direction. So, any questions?
Mr. McMillan?
I was asked a couple of weeks ago from some reporter in the Detroit News about partnership districts and specifically about vacancies. And, you know, that she was saying that it's obviously a big problem in partnership districts. Why do you think that is?
Well, I think there's a couple of things. One, as I've talked before, partnership districts have, like a death of a star. They, they start losing students, and if you lose 100 students a year for five years, that's $5 million out of your general fund. You start losing students, and you start cutting programs, you start cutting salaries, so teachers leave, and teachers know that, you know, they might not want to apply there.
Right.
So I think that's very difficult for partnership districts. Then you start, you know, cutting after-school programs, and you start cutting electives, and you might lose some more teachers that like to teach specific electives, or, you know, there's lots of different reasons. Plus, we have not as many students that seem to be going into education at the university and college levels, and I think that's hurting our state also.
Your earlier point, the first point, I think, is particularly important in light of what we're going to talk about after lunch, because I think these A to F grading is only going to exacerbate the issue of, you know, there's a losing of students, and then when you have an unfair system that's going to tag these schools as Ds and Fs potentially, or it's slanted against them to do, to, so that they'll get Ds and Fs, then it just continues the spiral even more, I think. So that's why, when we have this discussion, I'm going to, you know, really push for different, different ways to reduce that harm, because that, I agree with you, and I thought that was one of the reasons for the vacancies, and you kind of confirmed that for me, so thank you.
Other, other people? Dr. Pugh?
Right.
I have a, I have a teacher's periphery-o-vision.
You do.
So good to hear the news about Saginaw High and, and, well, Saginaw Schools, and I know that there are some people here that were a part of that meeting, and I heard good things about the meeting. So good to see that they're going in the right direction. One question and then a response to what Tom was saying is, is, I know, I think it was Saginaw High, or maybe it was the district as a whole, that was using as their measure, was it the SAT, is it the SAT or M-Step?
SAT, SAT for the high school.
And then they're, when are they going to be able to move over to the, I thought they're moving over to a different testing?
No, they'll...
A local testing.
Continue with the SAT. I think what you might be getting at is, and they're, the goals that they've established for the three-year goals are different than the benchmarks, and the goals will include some NWEA assessment in terms of growth on the RIT score.
Okay, I think I was getting confused before. Okay. And then, you know, to Tom's point, and I'll just bring this up, we talked about this at one of our last meetings around the educators, and we could go on and on about why we see this in our, in our partnership districts. I mean, you, you definitely hit some of the points, but some of the things that we've, there's a lot of information that's coming out, some good data, but one of the things here in Michigan, and I know we just closed out our Teacher of the Year yesterday, I think it was yesterday evening, and one of the things that we've talked about, and I thank staff for calling and trying to get input, but we've only had three educators of color since 1952 who have received Teacher of the Year. So I mean, I think that that speaks to how educators in these districts are dealing with so many things. I mean, a lot of times, they're having to take money out of their pocket to supply their classrooms, but then they're not the ones who are being... their classrooms, but then they're not the ones who are being noticed or rewarded, or even somebody having the time to even fill out the application to recognize them. And then some of the things, I just read an article where it was talking about how all of these things that a lot of teachers, especially those that come from the community, are expected to do, so they're not always celebrated, and so they're oftentimes having to do above and beyond what other educators are doing, because it's expected of them, and they should just be doing it because they care for the kids versus, you know, the other things that come with, like pay and all of those things. So, I mean, I think that those are things, as we're talking about some of these, you know, our top 10 and 10, and how do we make sure that we fill these gaps that we don't lose sight of?
Thank you very much. Other board members? Other thoughts? Just in, I'm sorry, Ms. Vecdo?
I have just a follow-up.
Please.
Just, where are the teacher vacancies? What subject areas and other permanent subs as well, and how many of those?
Yes, permanent subs, special education, and some math is what I heard, which is pretty typical.
Right, so the 13 that you say are vacancies, is that you're counting permanent subs there?
Thirteen, yes. 13 vacancies and not having certified teachers.
Okay, thank you.
And just to note, this is not an issue simply with partnership districts. I want to be clear, this is an issue that courses across the state. I think we're wrong to define it solely as partnership districts. It is most acute in many partnership districts. There are profound issues in partnership districts, but that doesn't mean that there aren't issues elsewhere as well. There are. Sheila Alice and I were on the phone with Chris Weigent, MASA Executive Director, yesterday. His group, which I was a member for a dozen years, which you were a member for many years, his group is very concerned about and has studied and is making recommendations associated with the teacher shortage. And he represents superintendents and other administrators across the state, not simply in partnership districts, but literally all of the regions of the state, all of the geographical areas of the state. So we need to be careful not to define it as about particular areas. It's really, really important. It may be more acute in particular areas, admittedly, but it does exist really across the state. I'm also reminded that it is not isolated anymore to particular subject areas. This is really important. Special education is a tremendous challenge. Math, science, bilingual education, ESL, world languages, career and technical education, the historic shortage areas, still profound issues. But we are experiencing elementary educator shortages, and that is something that many of us never thought would occur. When we had, for years, when we would have teachers go out, for whatever reason, they were leaving a community, they were going out on medical leave of one sort or another, you had a dozen people who were serving as long-term subs of one sort or another in your district, and they moved immediately into those positions, and they were pleased as punch. And a lot of us began our careers not in August or September, but in October, because of, or November, because of one of these sorts of circumstances. That is not as frequent a circumstance anymore. We just don't have the bench that we used to. It took more than a decade for the profession to be torn down. The profession needs to be built up over the next decade, and I'm going to be working with our Michigan Teacher of the Year, Carol Lawheed, our nine Regional Teachers of the Year. We're going to be meeting with them on the 18th, and we're going to be talking about the teacher shortage and the ways that we can address the teacher shortage. This is an existential issue for public education, the 1.5 million public school children across the state. Anything more for Dr. Pearson on partnership districts? Anything more on teacher shortage? Anything more on anything for the good of the group?
Yes, since we have a couple minutes, I should have asked, what are we doing to help fill those vacancies? That's really what I should have asked. So what specifically, yeah, I mean monetarily, or, I mean, I'd really like to know, that's really the pregnant question for what we're talking about.
I'm glad you brought that up. 21H funds, we were allocated $6 million this year, and we've had $13 million the last two years to work with partnership districts. Some of our districts are utilizing those dollars that we provide them when they ask for retention bonuses. I think that has worked. Saginaw did not ask for that, although I'm not sure if they ask for this year coming up. That's one of the ways that we've been helping. You know, besides that, it's, it's very difficult to provide special education and math teachers or whatever in districts that really do have those shortages. Saginaw has just approved a, well, I don't know when it was, maybe last summer, approved their new contract. I know that they are now offering $40,000 for a first-year bachelor, because I specifically asked that question. So that is good. Hopefully, that will provide next year the impetus to get enough teachers so there are no shortages. So that's one of the ways, but it's difficult, because all districts are limited with the amount of money that they have, so...
That's why I said, so we are providing some, but it may be one time, so...
Some districts.
It may not be there next year, so that...
Correct.
How helpful is it?
Well, one year at a time.
The answer is, it is of limited utility. You know, it's a rhetorical question, but just in case people didn't get that in the listening audience, it is of limited utility to do it just a single year, or to do it year by, year by year. It needs to be on an enduring basis. People don't enter the profession for single-year bonuses. Anything more for the good of the group, going once, twice, thrice? Let the record show, it is 11:49, and lunch, lunch is beginning, and we will be back after lunch recess at 12:50. Okay? Thank you very much.
12:50.
Yeah.
Yeah.